Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 25th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Lundey, do you have our word?
Yes, our inspirational words, actually, three words today: Never hold grudges.
Oh, I thought you were going to have three different words.
Take up ten minutes.
No, just three words.
Good, all right. Madam Clerk.
Under resolutions, one, investments.
So moved.
Second. Question. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey. No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do have one pending personnel matter and possibly an update on ongoing labor relations involving West United Steelworkers of America. Other than that, should be a pretty quiet morning, so I'd ask that we have a very, very brief executive session as a conclusion of our regular board meeting. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Decision on expedited one annexation of 38.665 acres from Carlisle Township to the city of Illyria, Richard Behring and his agent for petitioners, Middle Avenue Investment Company, LLC by Timothy J. Radickich, manager member.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just wanted to let you know both Eric Brunig and Attorney Schrader called about being here, and I indicated to them that it wasn't necessary. They didn't want to express their statements to you that they would have been here under ordinary circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey.
Aye.
Propose to postpone the view in hearing of brown lateral number one, Pittsfield Township view is to be April 6 and hearing April 21 due to the stay-at-home order from state of Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey.
Aye.
Community development award contract to York Construction for James and Dorothy Johnson, 45494 Parsons Road, Oberlin to receive grant assistance from CHIP program year 18, home repair activity which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders, two bids received, this being most responsive.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize administrator issue notifications of creation of TIF District 1, 2, and 3 in Columbia Township to the respective school districts in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 5709.83.
We may want to pull this off the agenda for today, but I think maybe we might want to talk about it a little bit, Mr. Cordez. This is the beginning of a TIF for Columbia Township, and it's to notify the school board or the school district of what this TIF would entail.
At homeowner request.
At the, yeah, the property owner request. So can we talk about this a little bit so people understand what this is and what we're planning to do?
Yeah, Mr. Vermancheck is here. He can come on up and discuss it a little bit.
Hey, Don.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Good morning.
The legislation today is, would be to notify the school district, as you rightly mentioned, and the tax incremental financing that's being proposed is under Ohio Revised Code 5709.78, if I recall correctly. That authorizes the county to establish incentive districts in order to redirect new property taxes that would be generated from development, declare that a public improvement, to do public improvements such as public infrastructure. In this case, the primary driving force is the bringing of the sewer from Mark's Road Station down Snell Road to North Boone, and then eventually would go down Boone all the way to 82, and then 82 from East River Road to the Strongsville border. Now, that would be the entire project. This would be done in phases. Also, we would be looking to the developers that would be generating the private investment to have houses built that would create the real estate tax increase, to also be contributing dollars themselves towards the construction of that sewer. So it's not purely a 100% taxpayer-funded effort, but it is also a private contribution to that that'd be calculated based upon their share of that cost and their use of that sewer. So other things that could be done are roadway improvements, stormwater improvements, bike trails, other public infrastructure that could benefit. So that's just a real high-level look at what it is.
Yeah, but the lower-level look is that approval in the future of this size TIF would pay for the sewer project.
Only.
Correct.
No roads, no bike trails, no anything.
Correct. At 10 years, 75% with developer contribution, there is enough to build the sewers.
Right, and to upsize them to handle the flow and to get it down to 82.
Correct.
And go east and west.
Correct, and also to provide the laterals so that those existing homeowners, when they would have to tap into the sewer, wouldn't have as great an expense, and we would have some flexibility to work with them to maintain a low cost so that they don't get adversely impacted when they would have to connect to the sewer, like can happen at times, but fortunately, this board has taken a very proactive approach towards protecting existing landowners and homeowners.
Right, well, we have gotten a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails from residents that didn't understand some of this, and they were worried about the levy that was just passed in Columbia Township for the school district, and they think that it affects the entire community, but this only, this TIF only affects that develop, or where that development's going to go, correct?
Correct.
Right now, the school district is receiving 100% of vacant land.
Correct.
With a TIF, they will get 25% of whatever the new value of that property is going to be.
Correct.
Per household.
Correct. Now, the one thing, just so everyone is clear, our TIF districts are larger than the developed land, and that is done so that we can provide and demonstrate benefit. Now, these were done, our public improvements have to benefit the incentive district, so the larger the district, the easier it is, and the more benefit we can demonstrate, so that if there were money, originally, we had tried to do some things to work with people, and while we've been rebuffed, we could have done a stormwater improvement. Neo Sword is actually looking at Baker Creek to do some improvements and to protect that resource. So there, the design itself of the TIF districts are much larger, but what is going to actually generate the TIF is strictly the Emerald Woods property and the MLM property, even though the districts are larger.
There seems to be, just for clarification, I was asked a question the other day, there's some thought that TIFs can only be done in urban depressed areas, but TIFs can be done in rural areas as well, too. In fact, I thought even townships themselves could have initiate their own TIFs.
Yes, that is all correct, yes. Does not require be an urban area, does not require it to be an impacted area. Now, cities have the ability to do different types of TIFs if those conditions exist, but the county has its own authorities and power as well to be able to do this, as well as townships.
Can you, I know it gets a little bit into the weeds here, and I don't know if Jerry needs to chime in, too, but when we talk about the pilots, you know, the payment in lieu of tax options that are available, obviously, that's not one that's on the table right now, but can you explain how those work?
If the county in this case, but really any entity that is establishing a TIF, wanted or was able to enter into an agreement with the school district or other entity such as a township, they would be able to negotiate a longer term and a larger amount of a tax redirection, a larger TIF. So rather than 10 years, 75%, say we did 30 years, 100%, which is the absolute maximum. So all of the increment is gone for 30 years, and the county in this case entered into an agreement with the school district. It could be that 35, 45, 50% of, you know, depending upon the needs of the different projects and the needs of the community, could be redirected as what, a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes from the tax increment fund that the county is collecting off the development, and make those payments directly to the school district. The advantage to that is, from the school district perspective, is that this isn't, these payments go to the schools, they're able to use it, but it's not limited like a levy can be, where you have a levy for operations, and you have a levy for capital, and you have a levy for debt service, and maybe you have an emergency levy, and each of these levies have their own rules and their own restrictions. The pilot really would be almost like a general fund where the school board then has the authority to be able to determine how it could be used for allowable school purposes, but it's not directly tied to a specific use, like many levies are kind of single focused.
And that's why you don't want to be so quick to say no, because, you know, there's other discussions that can be had about it, and through a pilot, I guess, you talked earlier, the one that we're discussing looks at basically, you know, putting the infrastructure in the ground, but also through a pilot, I guess, that opens up the door for roads and all kinds of things.
That's only if the school board was interested in negotiating a larger TIF, though.
Right.
So right now, we're looking at 1075. Pilots, none of that's even applicable.
I just wanted the public, you know, we're here to educate the public, I just wanted them to be aware that there's, you know.
That potential exists.
That's why we need to file notice and get into the process.
Right.
This ad hoc process we've been following for a year now hasn't produced any fruitful outcome.
Right.
So, you know, once you get into the process, the complete sizing of the TIF and any of those other things I've talked about can be negotiated.
So there still can be negotiations going forward once we start the process?
Have to wait for them to respond back.
Okay.
And they have 14 or 30 days?
It's a 14-day notification period that we would have to wait.
And the reason why it's on our agenda today is because the plotting and the lot splitting and everything just finalized yesterday or the day before?
It finalized yesterday with Tax Map signing off on it and parcel numbers being assigned. And we had gotten confirmation of that at about 3:00 PM.
Okay.
So the, so this is not an approval of anything, not a disapproval of anything, and they said the 14 days is not, that's a minimum. That's the minimum days I have to wait for anything to happen, not the maximum.
So I know we have a trustee here, and I know another trustee would have liked to have been here today, and there's nobody from the school board, but even though it's not a public hearing, so there will be an opportunity for other people to respond to this first initial step in moving this TIF forward, correct, Don?
We would be providing notice to Columbia local schools, Strongsville local schools, Lorraine County JVS, and Polaris in Cuyahoga County. All of those schools would be receiving a notice, and all of those schools would have an opportunity to comment upon that notice, and then when the time is ripe, we would be able to then consider legislation to establish a TIF at a set mark. Now, we're recommending the 10 years, 75%, so we have enough to do the sewer. That does not, if, depending upon what the future holds, and as of today, the future is a little more scary than it was a couple of months ago, it is important to make sure that we can get that basic infrastructure done, that sewer. And so there's, right now, there's nothing else being contemplated.
And this development goes forward regardless of whether we do a TIF or not. Our main objective in going forward with this TIF was to hopefully prevent Strongsville from annexing Columbia Township by having sewer accessibility all the way down to 82 and going east and west.
That is one of the advantages.
I don't see the project going forward without, without doing.
Sewers, right.
I don't see it going forward, unless you want to build an undersized.
Right.
Sewer that will do nothing further.
And we do believe annexation is a real threat. We're trying to secure our borders as well, too.
And density's already been approved over there, hasn't it?
By a court settlement.
So it will either be an adequate sewer, or it will be an inadequate sewer, but there'll be a sewer.
Right. Any other questions?
Jerry, anything need clarification?
Well, Commissioners, I represent this board, but I also represent the Board of Trustees, and I've already spoken with Mr. Musso this morning, and he is adamantly opposed to this proceeding, and he does not feel that, even though that's a public hearing, that this allows for adequate public input. I also represent the Board of Education of the school. My concern with them, even though this is a ministerial step, by giving, although Jim has said it's only 14 days as a minimum, for them to respond, they're going to have to meet, and I think they're going to be saying, "You're forcing us into meeting," so. On the other hand, delaying this another two weeks and 30 days is going to accomplish what? We're still going to be here, so.
And we also, Don and I attended a meeting out at the township that was public, and there was people there in the room, and this has been talked about.
To death.
To death.
Yeah.
This is no surprise.
No.
So I guess, just to finish my thought, I'm sure my other two clients are opposed to this proceeding today.
Today?
Yeah.
Because of the pandemic.
Yes.
Issues.
If people in Ohio have no clue how many people the prosecutor actually represents, I think there's hardly a governmental body. Didn't they add libraries recently? That was added?
Represent those two.
They're not involved.
Yeah, it always poses an interesting question, because Jerry's got, talked about wearing a lot of hats, so I still don't know how he does his job every day.
Usually can't make all of them happy. Almost whatever I say, somebody gets upset.
Right.
Well, it's up to the board whether they want to just put this offer until we get past this pandemic or move forward, but in the meantime, hopefully, we can continue to educate the public either way on what is actually, we're trying to accomplish here.
Well, we could be six to eight weeks.
Yeah, I just, you know, I know the Attorney General has recommended that, you know, if
there's any votes that could be deemed controversial votes, that you probably should, you know, hit the brakes and put things on hold, and, you know, I can't stress enough how we've, you know, followed all the proper procedures, and that, you know, even by law, we would be able to start the clock running today, should we choose to. I don't know where things are going to end up today, but I think because of some of the reasons stated, you know, that Jerry stated about the board being able to come back and their, whatever, the school board to be able to have, you know, discussions about it, and I know even today, I'm sure there were people who wanted to be, you know, in attendance because we send out the agenda to everybody, we're not hiding anything, it goes out to, you know, all of our townships and public distribution and everything. I just feel this could be deemed of a controversial nature, and, so for that reason, I guess I would make the motion to hold the item.
And I'll weigh in on that. I'm uncomfortable with the fact that the school boards are closed or not conducting business, that we're advising folks to limit any public exposure, and then forcing an action that draws them all back in would make me uncomfortable.
So the pleasure of the board then will hold this until such a time as we can.
No, we don't need an actual motion to hold it. We can, we've held items before without motions, correct?
Correct, and you made a motion, so that does die to a luck of a second if there's no second.
Well, if a motion is not required, I'll withdraw my motion.
I will just pull it.
Is that correct, Jerry? We can just pull the item?
Well, you probably should.
Let it die?
No, you, well, yeah, I guess if there's no second to.
There's no second, so.
There's no second to consider it, it dies.
Well, the motion wasn't to consider, the motion was to hold, so.
Somebody would have to move to consider it.
Right, and there wasn't.
Okay, and nobody's making the motion.
It's never made, it never comes up.
Nobody's making the motion to consider it.
So we'll just pull it off the agenda.
Understand it, sanitary engineer, approve and enter agreement with sanitary lateral placement, Tracy Sands, owner of property at 12402 Alton Drive, Grafton, and it is made cost of $1,100, plus core costs will be on the tax duplicate.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey. Chilling Services authorize various personnel utilize agency's MasterCard for 2020 not to exceed 2,500 for permissible expenses within the policy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey.
Aye.
Engineer approve and enter agreement with GSI Inc. in the amount of 25,000 for ongoing engineering inspections and materials testing fees necessary for the continuing construction of the Timber Creek subdivision in 2020 by North Bay Investments, LLC and Ene Township, and will be reversed by the subdivider.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey.
Aye.
Sheriff approve and enter agreement with New Rush Township for police protection and purchase of a replacement vehicle being an F-150 in the amount of 36,000 be paid by the township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kowski.
Aye.
Swita.
Aye.
Lundey.
Aye.
Public comment? Mr. Cordez.
Oh, public comment, he's. We know who you are, but you need to state your name and where you're from.
My name is Mike Musto, I'm from Columbia Township, I'm a township trustee. I just wanted to let you know that it sounds like the Columbia Township has been read into everything that's going on. We don't know how much the project's going to cost, we don't know the TIF districts, because we got a map that had red lines on it that you couldn't see, we don't know which, where the TIF districts are going to be. We don't know anything of any final decisions. This is going forward, and they're saying that we're not willing to do it, but they haven't given us any numbers, not a one, not one. Also, we've been, we've been asking for these different things and getting zero responses from them, and I can't understand why that is. Oh, we get to talk, we get to talk about how maybe we can get roads done, maybe we can get this done, maybe we can get that done, but we don't know for sure because we don't have the final numbers yet. The engineering is not done as of our last meeting, the engineering, they don't know where it's going to go, how big it's going to be, how much it's going to cost, we've asked. Okay, now, they told us before that a 10.
75.
A 75.
1075.
1075 would not build the sewers. Now, all of a sudden, it will. We, they wanted a 30-year, and by the way, the taxes doesn't hurt anybody? Yes, it does. They're saying we're going to give, we can actually work a deal, we're going to give the school board 50% of the revenue. The school board gets 68%. Now, if they don't put a TIF in, the school board gets 68%, and we get about 8 of every new building that goes up. At this point in time, we're not even considered for any. If you listened really closely, they'll get 75, and the school board will get 25. So we're going to lose 8% for 10 years of the taxes that are generated by those houses.
No, not by the houses, by the vacant property.
By the what?
By the vacant property.
No.
If the TIF isn't there.
The vacant property will still get the taxes for, but when they build the house, the taxes typically go up. We typically can get more money from that. All we have to do is have a new levy or a, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and then we can get the taxes for it, but we can't do that. We don't get anything except the vacant property. So where you're saying this doesn't hurt the rest of the residents, most certainly does. Not only that, we don't get that, but we have to supply fire, we have to supply a road crew, we have all the legislation to do. For you to believe that, if you want to believe them, that's fine, but if, but to believe that the township is not going to be hurt in any way by a TIF, you're absolutely, you're not getting the true story. That's all I want to say, and I'll be happy to meet with anybody to go over some things that I'm not going to say in public, okay? Not at this point, because you guys pushed it, but the next meeting, I will say some things in public, because you're not getting the full story.
Okay.
Morning Journal article quoted Commissioner Lundey as stating that he recalled that the Lorraine Police Department previously conducted an investigation and found no wrongdoing. This is blatantly false. I have a five-page report from the LPD which states, "Based on the information contained and the records received, I request the Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office review this investigation for possible charges against Anthony Horn, Sr. for receiving the owner-occupied credit on his real estate taxes on multiple residents in both Lorraine and Cuyahoga Counties over a six-year period." That's Lieutenant Super. Based on my review of the records, I determined that Anthony Horn, Sr. was given the owner-occupancy credit on multiple properties during the tax years 2011 through 2016, and there's a chart provided. There was no investigation regarding the nine voter fraud cases. The 1851 Center for Constitutional Law in an article dated March 24th supports the position that last week's delegation of powers to the county administrator by the Commissioners was unconstitutional, violating the Separation of Powers Clause and delegates legislative authority. March 3, Assistant Prosecutor Ennis communicated directly with my client, Dennis Flores, by email, violating Rules of Professional Conduct 4.2, which emails stated, referring to Judge Beleski's referral, "Dennis will for investigation." This matter was referred to the LCP for investigation. However, my information is secondhand, I am not the best source of that. No copy of the LCP report was provided to Mr. Flores. Commissioner Swita, your statement last week about my comment about public comment is wrong. I stated that no public comment is allowed prior to the vote of the Commissioners on agenda items. This is true. Your statement to the contrary is false. I have pointed this out on multiple occasions. Voter fraud claims are not election silliness. Tom Williams, this is about the rule of law, not show voting. Administrator Cordez comments last week is why we need an elected county executive and why we need a county charter, which will be on the November 3 ballot. His actions last week were clearly and totally reprehensible and irresponsible. Last week, the Commissioners ignored ORC 30503, the coroner's role, and ORC 30502 prior to voting. There was absolutely no discussions on these sections by the Commissioner or Ennis prior to voting. You failed to do your jobs. For many years, the Commissioners failed to enforce the limitation on public comment. Wasn't until 2017 that you enforced the Phillips Rule.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With regard to trustee Musco's statements, I emphatically dispute them all, they're not true. We had meetings out there, we provided what information we have, we cannot get permanent information until we start the process. I attended a public meeting out there, I should say, public ambushing by the trustees in Columbia Township, where Mr. Musco sat in the audience with his feet up on a chair, making derogatory sarcastic remarks throughout the whole meeting, wouldn't listen to reason. He routinely changes his position, they've known about this for some times, he used to be in.
position. They've known about this for some times. He used to be in support of this a long time ago, until this court settlement got a density he didn't like, so he's personally set about trying to destroy the project. So he can say whatever he wants. Mr. Marancheck's been with me at some of those meetings, has provided that information. Don, come to the podium, please.
I have blood clots in my legs.
Excuse me, you're not allowed to speak from the, from the, no, you cannot, sorry. Public comment is over.
I had my feet up on the chair. I have a blood clot in my legs.
Okay, thank you.
I had to have it.
Okay, you're out of order. You need to stop.
I understand.
Well, obviously, you don't, because you kept going on. Have we not provided as much information as we have every time it's been asked for?
Yes, and the last email that I sent to the township trustees on TIF showed a wide variety of scenarios that was sent out on February 26th to each of the trustees individually.
The, the, some of the information isn't, isn't finely detailed yet. That's why you go through the process, that's why you go through a negotiation on the process. We have tried to accommodate people all through this in an ad hoc process so we could get someplace without as, as little discomfort as possible, and that has consistently been blocked, especially by Mr. Musco, and the statements that he's told residents have simply not been accurate. And that information that we have is always available, so I don't think any information's ever gonna suffice. And I also need to point out that, that we had the agreement to go forward with this last summer. We waited on the Board of, the School Board, at their request, because they had a levy on, and we were ready to move with some of this last year, and we waited, we waited.
They asked us to wait?
They asked us to, okay, and after that was done, we came back, everybody just started forgetting all the things that we talked about and all the information that was given out. So it's just not an accurate depiction of what's going on here, and I'm just not gonna sit here anymore and listen to falsehoods from people when they come up here and they say these things, especially this man right here. The, with, so, any information that he wants that we have, we've provided. Is that correct?
Anything that we've had, yes.
Okay. The, the, with regard to talking about roads, Commissioner, you asked me to go out there a couple of times and talk about roads.
Right.
We've talked, we've tried to have those conversations.
Absolutely.
We've, we've met with no, no satisfactory input. We just go round the track, round the track, round the track. We've, we've explained what the TIF can do. We don't need those things done. We were hoping to work and collaborate with the local jurisdiction to maybe improve some of the roads out there by using TIF dollars. You do this with one big project, and the ones that follow don't have to be TIF'd, and you can apply, you can improve the community, improve the roads, et cetera. Some of those roads are in desperate situations out there. But it's like Groundhog Day every time we go to talk about this. So, that's why we need the process to run, so we can get to the end of the road, because we're just going around the track endlessly, and with the misinformation coming out, it's just, it's just not working. So, I don't know, Don, you want anything to it, because you're the ones on the front line of this TIF.
We have asked for information from the schools, a wish list. They have commented that the TIF would impact them negatively, which it, it can at times, but there are ways to mitigate that, and we were told outright that they could not share that information with us at the meeting that Mr. Musto and Mr. Cortez were at with me at the Columbia Town Hall. They keep asking...
We were always for a different kind of meeting, too.
Yeah, and, yeah, we did not expect anyone there but the trustees, but when the school treasurer said that she, she had information, but she could not share it with us, well, we continue to keep handing over everything we have, scenarios that we're making up as we go along, because no one will provide us with any real input. All we know is what the developer would like to do. We know what the sewer needs to be. In general concepts, we're trying to get all of this stuff designed, and we're trying to work with partners who are not acting as partners.
Did we ever, ever state that the 1075 would not pay for sewer?
No.
Thank you. It's never been stated. It's never been said. It's said that there isn't anything usually available after that that is going to be able to pay for additional improvements. So I don't know how many times you can say something if somebody doesn't wanna hear it and they wanna manipulate what's been said, and that's the case here. That's what's going on.
Well, most of the emails I have are from people saying the developer is getting free sewers and make them pay their own sewers, and I keep, once you get a chance to talk to somebody or email them and have a conversation, they realize that this is not, they are, the developer is paying for their portion of the sewer. This is to upsize and extend the sewer.
Correct.
Phase one is the installation of sewer, which the developer will pay for their use. That's where, that's another information to put out there, that they're getting free sewers. It's not the case. The, the second part is to do a phase two, to bring the sewer down and, and bring it down Boone Road and then down on 82. The, the, that phase would happen after there's a sufficient build-out. The other thing is that when they say they don't get anything, if it was a 1075, they get, they get a part of the 25% increase of taxes. See, we, we conveniently, when Mr. Musco speaks, he leaves out salient facts. Right now, he's getting 100% of nothing when it's, it doesn't get improved, it's not built. If it's built, and we do a 1075 for the first 10 years, they get, they get their portion of the 25% increase, so it's not just the land.
Of increased value.
It's just, see, the way he explains things makes, makes it sound so much worse than it really is, okay? So they would be, they would get a percentage, just like everybody, of the 25% above the 10%.
We lose, too.
Of course, the county loses out, too.
Everybody loses.
Well, nobody loses out, because it's a public improvement.
Correct.
It's a public improvement that couldn't be paid for otherwise. So, you know, with regard to what's going on in the community, I have gotten feedback that Mr. Musco has personally guaranteed residents out there that this sewer is never gonna go in the ground, and this is never gonna get built.
After they agreed to the density? I quote...
We didn't agree to it, so, so I just wanna, I wanna make it clear for the Board, because, you know, we, we've been working on this a long time. This is...
Unfortunately, you've been out talking to a, a small group of people that just don't want the sewer to go in at all, and maybe we just need to do a better job of letting everybody know. I mean, letters went out by the school board that were misrepresenting the facts. We need to put the true information out there.
And that's why we need to get in the process.
Right.
Okay, so that it becomes official workings. So, thank you, Don.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I just want to add that I know the county administrator and Don have spent, you know, endless hours on this project, and believe me, they both have every right to be very frustrated and disappointed in this Board this morning by us not beginning the cycle. You know, I just want to commend both of you for the work you've done. It's not an easy project, and, you know, on this Board, quite candidly, we've, we've had conversations with Board members and township trustees, and sometimes in life, what happens is you, you think everybody's singing from the same page, and you find out that the voices have moved to other pages, and, but I've always felt like we try to provide what information we have at the time, and I think that's the important part of it. Everybody can do projections, even any information that the school board would have had, would have been, been looking into, to the future and trying to figure out, you know, doing some projections as well, too. So you're hearing all kinds of different numbers and different opinions, but I really feel that we've gone way out of our way to, to try to communicate with the, you know, the school board throughout the process, and, and what's unfortunate is, when you, when you feel like you have an understanding of, okay, you know, we're gonna give you as much as we have at the time, and then we'll, you know, get back to this later when we finally have some things wrapped up, then it's, then everybody acts like the conversations never took place, and that's probably the most frustrating part of it. But sometimes you never have that, in, in elected office, I guess I've learned, people want, like, definitive answers, and, and, you know, there's not always definitive answers available. We'll give you what we have at the time, you know, much like what's going on with this coronavirus. I mean, the, the governor holds a press conference, and at 2:00, he's got this information. He leaves that press conference an hour later, and everything's changed, and that's just what happens, and that happens in the corporate world, too. You know, there's a corporate leader who said he was amazed by how politicians are accused of flip-flopping. He said, you know, we flip-flop in the corporate world every day, because the market changes and demand and supply changes, and we're trying to handle this as responsibly as possible. These are very unusual circumstances, and we're trying to take it seriously. We do feel that, you know, it is of a controversial nature, and people can't get here. It's hard for groups to meet, government bodies to meet, and, you know, that's, that's the only reason for the delay, but I, I just want everybody to know that we've worked very hard on it. We've tried to be as transparent with the information that we have at the time and have acted very responsibly, and, but I know there's gonna be frustration with, with our staff today as a result of putting things on hold, but at this point, I, I think, you know, we acted responsibly.
I think I, I wanna weigh in on that as well. I, it's confusing for me, because in private conversations, we've had a lot of encouragement from Columbia Station. We have been encouraged to try to work this through and, and bring about the necessary infrastructure that's gonna make this happen. Now, what is being projected is an impression that if we don't go through with the searing district, that it will retain or withhold or stop all of the growth in Columbia Station. It is not going to stop the growth. The density has already been determined. The investors or the developers are all ready to go. All we will do is they will, they will be caught with bad infrastructure. So the growth will still, still exist. The infrastructure will now not be adequate. There will be no opportunity to improve services, improve roads, to make a contribution of a tax value greater than vacant land, and to move that community forward responsibly. It is difficult when we can't all go to the table and look at the big goal and know that we have the best interest at heart, and we can't come up with a solution, and I just, I feel like we need to be responsible, and I'm asking everybody to be responsible when they approach this, this proposition as well as understanding that it is, it's not gonna stop growth. It's just going to stop responsible growth.
Can you, can you talk to the fact? We do the, this 1075, this small TIF, just gets us the upsize sewers and down Boone Road to 82. Other offshoots of development, either an industrial park or another housing development, because of the new sewers that we've extended, they'll get 100% of the value, new valuations on those, correct? There's no TIF on the rest of, the rest of what's going on associated with the sewer.
Right, the future development, plus the residents along the, the track of the sewer will, will, will receive, they won't be assessed for the sewer. In, in other communities, when they build a sewer, they assess all the way along. The Board's adopted a posture of, if a developer wants to put in a, a big community, not putting part of that process on the backs of other people along the sewer route. So, you know, we, and that's been done before out there.
That's not what I'm referring, I'm referring to if a...
A future development that may use the sewer. I know what you were referring to.
Okay.
I agreed with you. If, if the sewer in phase two moves down further than any future development, we wouldn't need an additional TIF to move the sewer. This is, this is, this is, there's enough to, to bring the whole sewer down.
But the increased valuation of the property, once there's new development, and so the, the taxes will be more?
Correct, and, and, and property values will go up once the sewers are in, because it's a, it's a public improvement.
So everybody will get additional property, increased value, increased taxes, the school board, the trustees, everyone.
And then if there's future development. I, I don't know when that would occur.
Future development, exactly.
But we would still have to, in phase two, extend that sewer. The, the first phase of the sewer is built sufficient to do phase two, but it's, it's only going, it's going to stop somewhere on Boone Road until we collect enough revenue, or there's, there's enough need that we can move the second phase of the sewer. Given the size of the build-out and, you know, some of the uncertainty, we don't wanna commit to one build. We wanna be able to do the first part of the build and then secure that and then do the second part of the build. I would hope that that would happen quickly. There's, there's a, there's a build-out scheduled. Don's talked to the developer about anticipate a build-out, but things change, so we'll be, we, we decide to be a little cautious on doing a phase one and a phase two, but that would come out of the, the TIF dollars. I would generally hope that within, you know, after the phase one was done, within two, two years or so, we're looking at the engineering and getting ready to do phase two, but it could be two or three years. So, I mean, you're right. Any future development that, that, that has caused evaluations to increase would be a bonus above everything.
And the additional, the new, the new development. Right, yeah, that's what he said. Mm-hmm.
And then after 10 years, it's, it's all bonus.
100% for everybody.
Right.
Responsible growth.
Yes.
We good?
Yeah, I, you know, I was on Avon Lake City Council when we went through our big growth period there in the 90s, and, you know, we just accepted the fact that the growth was coming, and the best you can do, as you talked about responsible growth, I think we coined it as sensible growth.
Okay.
Sensible, responsible growth, and that's, you know, that's the best you can do. You can't keep people from developing their property, but what this Board has always been committed to, and I give the county administrator 110% credit, he always stresses, if we're gonna do something, let's do it right, and that's what this Board's always tried to do.
With regard to Mr. Phillips's comment, a Board of Commissioners in every county except the ones that have an executive, which is in two counties now, as we know, out of the 88. Under the code, the Board possesses both legislative and executive responsibilities. It's a unique combination of responsibilities. It's not a three separation like it is at the federal level or the state level. So at the local level, Mr. Ennis may be able to help with this. The Board possesses executive responsibility as well as legislative responsibility. You are the legislative and executive body of the county. That's a unique situation that you don't see anyplace else. So you did not delegate any legislative authority.
Administrative.
What it is, what it is, is your executive administrative ability so that we can continue to sign for bills and payments and things like that, if, if, if things did deteriorate to a point where we, we had to figure it out. Again, we don't anticipate that happening. We do that at the end of each year so that we can balance out our accounts, close out our accounts, close out encumbrances and so forth, without having to meet every time we find something new, because it's, government is very large, and, you know, sometimes things are happening. I remember coming in on the, you know, the 31st to sign some documents that were needed to close out certain, certain funding streams and things like that. So, the, but, but a lot of people don't recognize that, that at the local level, commissioners have a responsibility, both executive and legislative, not just legislative, and, and that's not why we understood. So I think that's understood. And with regard to what I said to Mr. Phillips last week, Mr. Phillips would not insult people first. They would not insult him back. We're not up here to be an easy target for him to throw things at and, and throw insults and call people names and flog them and yell at them. I, I always had a good respect for Mr. Phillips. I, I don't know why or some of the things are the way they are, but, but I'm not gonna sit here and be insulted by that man and not, not respond to it. The, the, so with that, you know, I thought his comments were grossly out of line last week. I thought the way he conducts himself and chastises people is, is out of line. If he wants to be responsible or respectful without having to add insults, I think we can have a responsible conversation, and he's allowed to have his comments. I, I encourage us to do that, but, but I'm not gonna sit and just be insulted by Mr. Phillips without exception, without taking my time to respond to that. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I do have two items of pending litigation to discuss with you in executive session.
Commissioner's report.
Wow, Commissioner's report, okay. I'll, I'll try to be as brief as possible. Overnight, I guess, we're all glad to wake to the news that apparently they've worked out a stimulus package agreement in Washington, which is badly needed to help a lot of folks. I guess they were saying some of the details, 300 billion for small business, 150 billion local and state government. I'm interested in seeing what that, what that means, and 130 billion for hospitals, and I think the important part there, it expands unemployment insurance, apparently for up to four months, which is something that is going to be, you know, badly needed, and I think one member of the Senate called it unemployment insurance on steroids, and that's probably what we need right now to help people get through, get through these tough times. As far as the latest with the coronavirus, obviously, you know, we're trying to continue to operate county government the best that we can. We've had lots of discussions about operations, and I would just stress to you over and over again, please, while everybody's home, I know everybody's hanging out on Facebook and, you know, texting rumors and all this other stuff, please pay attention to our health department, what the governor's message is, what Dr. Acton's message is every single day. Lots of questions always keep rolling in. I had a couple of business people ask me about essential business. How do I determine if I'm an essential business? And I thought our Lieutenant Governor, John Husted, had a, a good way of responding to that, and that is that if the health department showed up at your door saying, "Why are you open?", how would you explain that to them? And if you feel like you don't have a good explanation or an impressive song and dance, you're probably better off, you know, not, not being open. Just wanted to give you a quick update on, you know, our senses and how we're handling that whole thing. that whole thing. And I just want to make you aware that obviously some of the schedules have shifted with things. We have our complete count committee and and I can tell you there are conference calls that are ongoing. As far as as far as the self-response phase, that was supposed to run March 12 through July 31. That's now been extended through August 14. I I did my census Saturday, I think, when I was sitting at home. And it's now is an excellent excellent time for people to to fill out their census. Other schedules that have been changed, they were going to do a census count on April 1 of the homeless and try to track down the homeless where they normally would gather. Instead of April 1, that now will be on on May 1. Then also, you know, the non-response follow-up, that means that individuals who have yet to respond to the census, that window was going to be May 13 through July 31. That's when they were hoping to quit coming back and knocking on people's doors, but now that's going to start May 28 through August 14. So, I don't know about you, I generally don't like people knocking on my door, ringing the doorbell without letting me know they're coming by the house. But so be aware that the the schedule has changed and just respond to the census while you're home. Want to let everybody know how Lorraine County is doing so far for the the state of Ohio. And this is as of, I think we put these numbers together yesterday. The state, the response rate so far is 22%. We're proud to report the county is exceeding the state response rate. We're at 24.5%. As we go through some of the some of the communities here, it looks like, let's see, Pittsfield and Camden are the townships have the highest response rate so far, coming in at 38% for Pittsfield, 36% for Camden. On the low end of the response rate, La Grange right now is at 21%. And these numbers change daily. On the the villages front, we've got Sheffield Village and Wellington kind of leading the pack. Wellington's always in the news, 35%. And then 31% with Sheffield. And then as we go to our our communities, Sheffield Lake right now is leading the response group with 28% response. Avon Lake is coming in second at 26, Avon at 24, Amherst at 25. Lorraine and Elyria, we want to make sure we get our numbers up strong there. They're coming in at 22%. We'll try to give you a weekly update on it. And and just so you know, in 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 2000, the response rate for Lorraine County was 83%. And surprisingly, in 2010, it actually dropped to 82%. So, of course, obviously, we want to surpass those numbers because, you know, when you have, you know, close to 20% of of your population not reporting and you're looking at probably anywhere from $1,200 to $1,500 a person per year for the next 10 years that we won't get credit on 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 the census, it's important that everybody responds. Saw an interesting article recently, it said, you know, during this coronavirus outbreak, that a lot of decisions that are being made in Washington determining appropriations of of various items, I'm sure it's probably different on the supply end based upon the cases that are being reported, but when it comes to other distribution of funds and may even be a result of the the stimulus package, a formula will probably be in play. So, that's just a reminder of how the how important the census is. And and as I said at the beginning, we're trying to do the best we can to continue to operate county government. All you have to do, if you've got questions, concerns, email us. You can still call us. We're still working. We're still available. So, do do reach out to us. That completes my report.
Thank you. Yeah, we're all going through some very difficult times. Unfortunately, we had to make some tough decisions about a lot of our employees and our staff over the last few days. So, there's some that are working from home that can, some that had to be put on administrative leave. So, you know, the unemployment numbers are are going to continue to go up. Unfortunately, I know my son thought he was going to be laid off and so I tried to get on the the website and it it was not up yesterday or the day before. So, I think that the press conference, the governor mentioned that they were trying to to fix that problem so those people that are trying to get sign up for benefits can do so.
You want to talk about the things that we've done?
Sure.
I mean, that's up to you.
Yeah.
I know you've mentioned that.
I've got some in my report, too.
You want to go?
Yeah.
The the we have, you know, sometimes you you read like a letter to the editor where people are saying, well, you know, we're we're not working and all the government workers are sitting home getting paid through this. That's not really an accurate depiction. We we did yesterday send a great deal of of employees home on unpaid administrative emergency leave. The the we do have a handful working remotely right now. We're working on having more than work remotely. To be candid with you, we weren't prepared to have people work remotely. It's been a bit of a struggle for us to to change that. The 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 public's never taken a great exception of public employees not being at a public place of work. So, it's not something that we've embraced on the distant work environment, virtual work environment, and so we're trying to re-gear with that.
That and the hacking abilities of.
Correct, and that's been a big problem for us, but we're working through that. I know that we're waiting on on some VPN licensing from the state so that we have more job and family services folks work remotely, that then then the population there and get some more distance. Workforce development is fully working from home, but there was some people that were deemed non-essential through this that went on administrative leave. We've thinned out the staff up here. We've closed non-essential departments, the solid waste, the collection center, visitors' bureau.
Record center.
Record center. We have one person at Record Center because the courts and children's services pull from the Record Center. So, we still we pardon me, sorry. We need a presence there, but we've we've diminished that from from four to to one. And the all of those people, except the ones that can actually work on on remote location and a remote location are on unpaid administrative leave. It's a big vote of them, too, just like everybody else. And and I'm not sure that we're done yet. As we look at the processes and how long this takes, the the Supreme Court is is indicated that the courts can cannot close. They have to remain open, but they they have given them lateral judgment ability to realign dockets and the the things that are going on, but the courts have to stay open. That's according to the to the state Supreme Court. So, we have to maintain that. There's also transactions happening in the treasurer's office, the recorder's office. While they're closed to the public, there is still a great deal of work going on either remotely or they're doing delivery services where there's a pickup and a drop off of information to defeat the contact. Clerk of Courts has closed three of his four title offices and moved to the bulk of the work, the downstairs here and this one here. And so, he's consolidated, but his court folks are still there to serve the courts over across the street until decisions need to be re-looked at. Everybody, this has been done on everybody until 17th of April, but they're on notice that it could go longer. Of course, if the situation improved, which we're not really gaining information that says it will, it could be shorter. So, we've we've taken appropriate steps and we're going to continue to evaluate the environment and take additional steps with regard to public meetings. We have to look at all of those public meetings and how many people we allow in a room for a meeting. And and the building right now is still open to the public for essential work, but eventually we're probably going to close the building to 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 the public absent that essential work because we don't really have a lot of way of controlling that right now. So, there's there's a lot of things going on and what we can do is ask people to be flexible. Community development is down, what, six people now, Don?
Six plus two, one filled.
The the.
Board authority.
The strange part is that you would think that it'd be the lesser position, the board authority's down, yes, it is. The you would think that the lesser positions would be the ones that were first put on administrative leave. That's not really the case. We haven't put any custodians on administrative leave. Need them here to clean the surfaces, clean the building, get all those things done because work is still going on. A lot of these people are professional, paraprofessional positions that have been, and there's some administrative positions, too, but it hasn't just hit the 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 first echelon of employees and said, everybody.
Right. So, thank you. Thanks for clarifying. Other than that, I just want my my babies are going to be 30 years old on the 30th and we're not going to be here. I know, my twins, so it's going to be an unusual birthday, I'm sure, this year since we all have this, you know, the social distancing. So, happy birthday to Jordan and Joe, 30.
Great. So, last week before, we had the governor's directive. We did have a land bank meeting. We've also, all three been very involved in a lot of conference calls and updates daily on the governor's position with the coronavirus outbreak as well as with our County Commissioners Association and several other organists, the health board, the board of health. We're getting daily conference calls and updates to understand the position and the direction we're supposed to take. I did have my first committee meeting online, which was Keep America Beautiful or Keep Lorraine County Beautiful. I do that all the time. Keep Lorraine County Beautiful, but we know that most programs are probably going to be suspended just because of the timing of them. We had a very productive builder contractor developer meeting here at the administration building where we're trying to look forward into methods of conducting, developing and construction practices in the county that enable a good, healthy work environment for everybody and productive. Monday, the governor did come out with his his directives and recommendations. And so, yesterday was a very difficult day for all of us. We had the directive to thin out the staff, that only those folks who were essential to the daily operations that are continuing were to be staffed within the building. We're making those so noted changes for those who are capable of conducting necessary business, who can work from home, as well as then determining which departments had non-essential workers who are on unpaid administrative leave. Now, those are difficult decisions. I was happy to see that last night they did approve a unemployment and bailout assistance program. I have optimistic confidence that between that package, the bailout provisions, some of the leniency that is being offered by lenders, mortgage holders, landlords, as well as auto finance financiers are going to make up some of that gap for those folks. I want to thank everybody on our staff and throughout our community who continues to go to work in light of what's going on, as well as thank those who are now at home for their patience as we weather through this. It's been predicted or projected that based on the formulas available to us, the end of April up till mid-May is when we can expect our our actual peak. And I want to remind the public that there are hundreds of folks every day who contact the board of health or their physicians and are told your your symptoms are not to an extent that you need to be hospitalized, so we need you to weather this at home. The numbers are very deceiving because of the fact that we don't have a count on those folks who are being quarantined at home and are not being counted in the afflicted numbers. So, don't take this lightly. Look at what's happening in New York and understand in other areas, understand that we're still just approaching that that eye of the storm. That said, Friday was the first day of spring, so hopefully, we're going to see an improved situation moving forward, not just our weather, but hopefully, this health crisis will pass and we will come through that storm as scathed as little scathed as possible. Thank you.
Before, I know you want to end on a happy note, but I forgot to mention, Mr. Cordes, we need to talk about this. We're looking at a possible 20% cut in our revenues because of the sales tax, because the casinos are closed, we're not going to get any casino revenue.
Well, the.
Thanks, Laurie.
Sorry, I know.
What it was, the the last tax reports were significantly up. I've been in contact with the treasurer to maintain cash flow liquidity, short-term funding and so forth. They were up, but as I joke with him, that's toilet paper money. Everybody ran out and bought toilet paper.
Yeah, right.
Unlike food, that's taxed. But that's that's just a way of looking at, they bought a lot of things that were taxable, a lot of supplies. A lot of the food was not taxable, as we know, but it's helped tax up a bit, but that's that's going to that's going to boomerang. It's you you're going to see, you're probably going to see a rather than a V, probably a W with regard to our sales tax. Even in the worst times in 2010, it was declining, but it was a predictable decline. This is less predictable this time. I've I've been in touch with every elected official, the and I need to have more dialogue with the courts also, but they're they're a separate type environment when we deal with them with regard to powers and authorities and so forth. But there's going to be to be some work on the budget in the spring. It's it's too early right now, it's but I've I've indicated to them that I saw a potential high-end swing of eight to $10 million in our revenues. That's about a 20% look at at one revenue stream. There's other revenue streams that are that are secure and dedicated and they won't change, but the ones that that are predicated upon community spending and resources in the community, I believe those things are going to take a pretty big battering. Now, one of the things I can't predict is the stimulus package and how that re-energizes the community and what happens with those funds. But but a lot of folks are struggling to pay their rent, pay a mortgage, pay a car payment. We don't receive revenue on those things. So, unless it stimulates spending and and going back out, it's it's going to be fairly challenging to accurately predict. But we will have to forecast, make some assumptions and then see how we're going to address those, probably beginning sometime in May because we don't have a lot, I have about a half a year left and.
But the longer you wait, the deeper the cut, so.
The longer you wait, the harder it gets. Yes, it does. And and we do have some flexibility. We've 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 maintained a healthy posture with regard to growing our carryover a little bit every year since the days when we dropped way down, but it's not going to be enough to carry us through. There's some maneuvering we can do to shore ourselves up. We did a lot of that from 2008 through 2013, quite frankly. But but we need to be mindful in all the departments that that the revenue is going to be significantly impacted for the for the near future.
Well, I know the governor has implemented a hiring freeze and wage freeze and all that, but what about like, can we freeze at least capital projects or anything big that anybody's looking to do right now?
But most of most.
It's already underway.
It's already out there.
Yeah.
We can't stop putting in the new court system.
Right.
The computerized system, the docket system, can't stop putting it in the clerk of courts. It's already underway and it's millions of dollars.
Right, correct.
I guess we could stop the parking deck, but then we have the bigger holes and the bargain that go over the place because they got it all chopped up. So, we don't have any huge project that comes out of capital.
That hasn't already been approved.
That hasn't already been approved. The only one we're looking is that energy conservation potential project, we're going to go out with the RFP for that, but that's going to be a self-paying for, self-supporting project from the savings. I have a lot of bonds going to market in the next 30 days. The market is so unpredictable and volatile. We had hoped to go to some long-term financing on some of our shorter-term permanent financing. I like to refer to it as it's long-term bonds. I I just don't know. We're going to put the resolutions on with going to permanent and going to short-term financing, depending on where the market's bouncing. I talked to all a couple of weeks ago about a refund opportunity on some of our bonds because the market was looking so ripe to get back in. Even the newer bonds that we did 10 years ago were looking very attractive for considerable savings on a refi, a tune of a couple of million dollars. That's gone.
Overnight.
Yeah, it it pretty well evaporated. So, we're looking for where the market's going to be so that we can we can get the capital we need. Remember, all these projects that are ongoing, we're in short-term borrowing for them. We don't go to permanent finance until the project's over and you clean up all your costs and you know what you need. So, it's going to be interesting what happens. I have a rating call here in a couple of weeks. This one's going to be a tough rating call, probably back to way back to nine, 10. And the rating agencies right now, they're a little down on on government entities and their ability to get through this and the cost that is going to be bad and where it's where it's going to come from. So, I'll let you know more. I normally don't worry about these rating calls. This one has me a little bit a little bit frustrated and got a little anxiety over it, but we'll see where they take us.
I'm just hoping that the governor takes the rainy day fund that's been sitting there from all of our local government funds and and opens up some of that money to bring back to our local governments, so. And I I have a feeling he will.
He's done a good job so far. I I think he's really emerged as a strong leader and a reliant source for us through this crisis, so hopefully, he'll have the wisdom to anticipate those needs as well.
Yeah, just on the personnel front, since we brought that up, you know, it's it's always difficult sending anyone home. You know, everybody's got a family and bills to pay and. You know, everybody's got a family and bills to pay, and there's enough anxiety these days without having other uncertainties about making bill payments. But, you know, I guess I would say really all of our employees are essential, and I say that because we're so lean, that what it really comes down to is maybe the duties they perform are not as essential as some other duties that have to be performed. But that's just the reality of...
Sensative.
Our interpretation of the directive was essentially, we were open because we're an essential function in the community, so government was not closed, but that we were to identify the essential functions, things that didn't need to be done right now, we didn't need to be doing, and a lot of those things have been put off. That's why at the solid waste, there's no events going on, there's no meetings going on. So the visitor's bureau, we're not doing much, anything over there. Yeah, they could plan for later in the year, but right now, they don't need to be doing that. Collection center, while it's a valuable resource in our community, there's too much contact there with people driving in and in a closed environment, and do we need to be doing it? It's not a mandated service, so it's been closed. So we took a careful look at all of that, but there's still maybe more. I just want to caution everybody, this may not be the end of the road. We're still looking at all of our areas to see if we can get people into a safer environment. It's unfortunate that it's economically affecting them.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that's the critical piece here, is that we are not looking at a financial solution. We're looking for a safety solution. And anytime you want to compare safety with financial, I just don't think we're comparing the right elements. We have to be responsible for the safety of the folks that we're asking to show up and perform duties in light of the fact that some of those duties can just wait for a little bit.
Okay. Madam Clerk, where are we here? Your report?
Sharon's report was done.
I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I ruined it, remember?
The first day of spring, remember?
And then I brought it back down here. Sorry.
Next week, we will not meet. Board of Coursemenants?
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Question? Kikowski?
Aye.
Swita?
Aye.
Lyndy?
Aye.
Make a motion that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Kikowski?
Aye.
Swita?
Aye.
Lyndy?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.